Mr. Arnold, can you assist Mr. Ross, please?
If we can get the video up on the screen behind them, then perhaps the board members could just direct their attention to that screen. And see if you guys can start the video into YouTube like. While we're waiting for that, I would just take an opportunity to elaborate a little bit on the process that we've gone through up to this point in time. Steel Center, as you know, is the career technical education program that your school district had decided decades ago to be a part of. And the Commonwealth of North Carolina all school districts have to provide curriculum offerings to their isolated students that relate to career technical programs of study. You've chosen to join up with the 10 municipal districts here regionally in Southern Allegheny County to do that. Here's the video.
What does it take to maintain strong communities? It's a question often on the minds of civic leaders, along with leaders from business, government, and education, as well as members of the community itself. While this is a complex question, and we know there are many viewpoints to consider, everyone can agree that it takes a healthy economy with successful businesses and industries for communities to thrive. To make that possible, all communities need a well-trained and highly skilled workforce. It's the cornerstone of any strong community, and without it, we all face a tough road. Fortunately, for the communities in Allegheny County's South Hills and Upper Mon Valley, a resource has helped meet the critical workforce needs of our local economy since 1964. That resource is Steel Center for Career and Technical Education. Through a collaborative partnership, the 11 school districts of Southern Allegheny County own and operate Steel Center. Together, they provide their high school students with opportunities to begin a lifelong career right here within the local and regional job markets. Students from communities within the Baldwin Whitehall, Bethel Park, Redwood Borough, Clerken City, Duquesne City, Elizabeth Forward, South Allegheny, South Park, Steel Valley, West Jefferson Hills, and West Midland area school districts can launch into a successful future by attending Steel Center. Operating in Jefferson Hills, Steel Center's convenient location is central to the partner school districts. Classes and programs are taught by knowledgeable and dedicated faculty who are accomplished practitioners within their respective career fields. Along with these talented educators, the Steel Center team includes a dedicated and supportive staff and administration to help meet the needs of students. Steel Center is a pathway to success for students in grades 10, 11, and 12, preparing them for entrance directly into the workforce or military after high school, but also to continue their education at two- and four-year colleges and universities, as well as trade schools. While still in high school, Steel Center students earn industry-recognized credentials, which are desperately needed by employers, as well as college credits to help them reach their higher education goals. Our post-secondary educational partners have come to expect Steel Center students to be well-prepared for studies at the college level, and local and regional employers within the healthcare, construction, hospitality, transportation, manufacturing, IT, and other industries have come to depend on Steel Center graduates to bring their skills and talents into the workforce. Steel Center maintains important partnerships with these employers who support the school by providing work-based learning experiences, such as job shadowing, internships, and cooperative education programs. Our business and industry partners also serve on the school's 19 advisory committees to assist in the school's continuous improvement. Many of our business partners are managed or even owned by Steel Center alumni who truly know the value of a Steel Center education. Grounded in a rich history of producing top talent for the workforce within our communities, Steel Center is constantly looking to the future to ensure that our programs, team, and facilities continue to evolve by providing students with a competitive advantage for their future, supporting the workforce needs of the local and regional economy, and continuing to strengthen our communities. Yesterday, today, and tomorrow, Steel Center is truly making a difference.
Here again. So, we wanted to begin our conversation just with a reflection of what Steel Center does and provides for your communities that are served by the West Midland School District. To move along here and give you some real high-level snapshot of what we're looking to do, there's two basic goals that we have set up that the plan addresses. And the first is to strengthen our programs, to improve the programs that we offer, the 18 programs, and in the future, perhaps the new programs that we haven't yet determined what they should be. And also to address code issues, compliance issues, ADA compliance, building code issues. Our building is 42 years old, and so as a result, there's a lot of systems that need to be replaced and repaired. At a high level, we'll be in program improvements, a $2 million expansion of our diesel technology program. I invite any board member or any member of the audience to look up on nd.com. As I stand here, I guarantee there's probably between 150 and 170 openings in the Pittsburgh area for diesel mechanics and diesel technicians. Many of those got scored out salaries of $25, $30 an hour and higher. So, they're great opportunities. So, we're looking for a $2 million expansion of the Diesel Tech program, $1 million in enhancements to our culinary arts program. And Pittsburgh has become a very much hub of hospitality. And so, we want to encourage future West Midland students to take advantage of that by enhancing that program. $825,000 to enhance our heating and air conditioning program, which we all know is a very much in-demand occupation. Very costly to get repairs done to your house. So, those are in-demand occupations. $595,000 to improve our publicology program, including a salon, a dedicated salon for outside customers to come in and get the public access to have that. So, we want to strengthen the programs, and then future programs that we may go in advance. That future programs that we may have opportunities to include at some point would be perhaps a mechatronics program, a dental assistance, motorsports, which has become an emerging field, and also warehousing logistics program, logistics management. Those are the future programs. So, the critical repairs and ADA building code issues we're talking about. The plan includes $7.6 million for HVAC system repairs, $3.3 million for electrical system updates and repairs, $1.9 million for ADA updates, and $1.3 million for plumbing updates. As you can see, just some of the pictures, and I'm sure that you've addressed this at different points in your district. We've got dilapidated facilities, we have pipes that are rusty, we have different areas of the building. So, at 42 years of age, the school has served us well, has served West Midland well for a long time. But the time has come to repair some of these and replace some of these items. This is just a snapshot of the process that got us here. We did an architect's study back in 2010. And between then and now, there's been a number of reasons why we haven't pulled in on a renovation. There has been replacements on emergency level. We're going to change the slide. In 2016, we had a water replacement project. 2019, a driveway replacement and storm drain replacements. Along the way, while we were planning, we did all the multiple plumbing issues, the air conditioner, or air compressor rather, there was a small fire we had to address and replace motors on the air compressor, multiple HVAC. And a lot of the systems are so old, we can't get parts for some of them. So, we've had to re-go and reuse old parts from different parts of the building. The program, the proposed renovation gives an economy of scale to addressing these issues. You see here in this slide, an example of what an old valve looks like in our school and what new valves we've had to replace on an emergency basis look like. And so, in replacing valves one at a time, two at a time, there's savings that's not realized by wanting to learn to repair it, or the overall renovation is going to give us an economy of scale and a lot of savings overall to update the building. This is a high-level view, and you've seen this information in your materials that were sent to you of the way we want to stage the construction. We need to keep the school operational while we're improving it. And so, we've planned this to take a period of time, beginning proposed, beginning to be this October, and final ending of it will be in April 2026. So, it's going to be stretched over a couple of school years in order for it to be done effectively and also keep the school operational for the students. And then the high level, again, amount of that would be $29 million, $29 million. Which, again, that information is available to you. Now, in terms of what does this look like for the West Midland School District? And I do apologize for, I'm going to change the slide. I did the presentation in Google Slides and hadn't translated to PowerPoints for purposes of giving it up on the screen. So, we have a couple of question marks instead of bullet points. There should be four bullets up on the screen, my friend is in the back there. So, for your school district, you are 9.41% owner of Steel Center. And that would be the percentage of the total renovation cost that we would be proposing and asking for. If a bond were to be proceeding forward, that would leave a borrowing amount of $2.7 billion for West Midland, paid by annual debt service of $197,000 for 20 years. Over the course of the debt service, it would be a total of $3.9 million after 20 years. That's just the breakdown specifically, what it would mean for you. So, a couple of questions have come up, and these are reasonable questions while we are proposing this to the school board members in various districts. Do all 11 member districts need to approve this? The answer is yes. The way that the joint charter agreement is set up among the 11 partner school districts, it is set up where all 11 member districts require to approve any type of capital expenditure like this. Another question, can districts pay upfront if they happen to have capital reserve monies or if they have other reserve monies, I'm not sure if they do want to make contributions? The answer is yes to that as well. Of course, it's not possible that districts can't make their payments or miss their debt service payments. So, this is being addressed, the way that the bonds are going to be structured, with bond insurance, which will provide some protection, and then the state subsidy intercept program that will be written into the resolution that the districts will have to approve if we are going to be successful moving forward with this. Also, I have on the phone, joining us, one of our partners from PFM was accused. She's just part of the presentation. Melissa, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm linking them to some detailed questions and answers. If you have some questions about the financing part of it, Melissa is going to be helping, you know, providing some assistance in that area. And finally, just to sort of bring this to closure, to the bottom of the plan. So, by adopting this plan, what we're looking for and what this does, this supports high-quality career preparation for your students. It invests in your communities. It ensures a safe and warm and dry environment for your students and provides savings by avoiding the emergency repairs and providing an economy of scale, we talked about building. The resources, once we complete this presentation here this evening and moving forward, I would again direct you toward our website, which we've, you know, put a nice page together of all this information. And beyond that, you have myself, you have my contact information. I'm available to, you know, answer questions by phone, by email. Along with myself, partners to this discussion have been our superintendents here at West Midland School District, which Mr. Sol's been involved in discussions among the superintendents, the Grubbo superintendents. Mrs. Castellini represents this district very well on our board, and she's knowledgeable about this information as well. And then in your packets, I would direct you to two events we have coming up if you would like to come out and see firsthand some of the issues we talked about on March 8th, Tuesday, March 8th, or Thursday, March 31st. And this was now up to you, and we can get some more comments of that. We're having what we're calling the Strengthening the Pathway of Success forums. And then we can now see the building up front personal and, you know, become more attuned to the issues. So, that pretty much concludes the information that I brought here to share through this evening based on our discussion, presentation, or the information that you received in advance. Do you have any questions?
Questions? I have a question. So, the 9.41%, how's that determined?
That's a great question. Please.
Please.
So, our school district's consortium comprises 100% of the ownership of Steel Center. Based on the property values of our school district, based on the property values of Bethel Park's school district, moving forward, there's a formula that is driven, that establishes based on property value the percent ownership, and thus the percent liability whenever it comes to capital expenses.
My other question is, does that change your commitment?
So, that's a great question also. Melissa, I want to start me into this, and then I would invite you to jump in. The debt service can be structured multiple ways. It can be structured in a way that will walk in that percent. It can be structured in a way where it adjusts yearly, every five years. You know, we're not at that point yet. Our goal, ask at this point, is for you to consider what we're proposing. We're asking for a decision, and we're going to be contacting you again and engaging with you again through our solicitor to put together a resolution that we would ask you to consider for approval, agree to participate as part of this project with the other school districts. Once that's approved, and hopefully that occurs by May, then there'll be additional resolutions for borrowing and so on and so forth. Once we've put an appeal to our sponsors regarding the adjustment of the percentage.
Just as something that we're due diligence in with bond councils, so the special type of lawyer that is utilized when you issue bonds, as Kevin said, it can be fixed at the time of issuance or can be readjusted either annually or periodically.
One more question. Sorry. There's a 22 series and a 24 series, and we approve of both at the same time? Or we approve of one, and then approve of the other?
Did you get that question, Melissa?
Yeah. So, right now, we won't ask, you know, we aren't asking you to approve any book. And if we, so it's kind of a question of whether we're beginning to do two borrowings or not. If we need to do two borrowings, it will be because of some federal tax rules around how quickly money needs to be spent. At the time that we come before you with a borrowing resolution, it will be spelled out whether you're just signing up for part of the borrowing or the entire borrowing.
That's great. Each of our districts, and this is our fourth presentation, they've put together different responses or different planning, had different discussions. I mean, you know, this is not going to be without such a scuff of you wanting to add anything with discussions you have here district or community in general. One thing, I'd like to be here, and one thing I want to point out that is in the presentation, this borrowing does not go against, the way it's structured, this borrowing does not go against each of our district's deadlines, which considering the other districts that are participating, that is a challenge for some of them. A number of them, including Brentwood, are doing some, we're hoping to do some major construction coming up. So, it's a very important thing. Another thing that should be mentioned is that if you've been out there, you understand that we also own the Mon Valley School, which is across the road from Steel Center. There are some things that need to be done with that, but that is, we're basically just an owner of that, and the intermediate unit runs the Mon Valley Special Education School there. So, we're working on getting a lease with the AIU. And at that point, if there'll be any needed renovations, we'll tackle it at that point. But it's been a long time coming for this. We've been, as Mr. Rice said, we've been working on trying to get the renovations pulled together since 2010. And of course, you know, with the previous recession, it was a very challenging time to do anything. So, a lot of things are put on hold, and we're doing emergency repairs. But as you know, that's not the way to do things effectively. And this basically sets us up for the next generation of students that will be coming forward. So, it's been, we've seen a lot of discussion. Mrs. Stellini can tell you, all the hours we've spent at the Steel Center Board meetings as well. But it's had a lot of information and a lot of discussion, both with the superintendents and business managers as well.
Other questions from other board members?
I would direct you to page 4 and 8, just to finalize another last couple of closing thoughts for me. Page 4 and 8 of the financial proposal. And that really details two things. One, as Mr. Scott mentioned, the type of bond issue that would be structured in a way that not come against borrowing capacity or limits of the school districts involved. And then on page 8, it's a more detailed analysis of West Midland's obligations. It's broken that out separately. And the following page gives you the full picture with all the other school districts combined. So, again, we wanted to make as much information available as possible. We very do thank you for the opportunity to come out here. We're really proud of the Steel Center students from the West Midland area and all our school districts and the great things that they do. Each year, we turn on graduates that become leavers right here in your community. They buy homes here, they repair their houses and cars, and then take care of you in healthcare settings. And so, we're invited to be a part of that on behalf of West Midland Area School District. And again, thank you very much for your contribution.
Mr. President, that concludes tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Solomon. Three addendum items?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two addendum items under number 15. Athlete personnel on number one, E. Daryl Carter, middle school assistant, boys' track coach, resignation effective Friday, February 18th. And then number two, whether C. Daryl Carter be hired as the middle school girls' head, track coach, effective Friday, February 18th. That's all.
Motion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. DeSanto.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Questions or comments? Go call.
Hager.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Buhas.
Yes.
Stannick.
Yes.
Lees.
Yes.
Uh, there's a call here.
Do you have a cell phone? If it gets too close, I might get one of them.
Second floor, here in the citizens, a couple of comments. In order to speed up this time, the following lesson that must be a lesson for good or for a resident, matter must have been discussed through proper education channels. Please direct comments to the board president or superintendent. Your remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. If you have questions about the agenda, please give us a chance to address or break those down and address those as we cover the agenda items. Rebecca Sobolka. Could you please state your address, please, please?
Rebecca Sobolka, 4131 Mississauga Street. I retired as a West Midland teacher in June of 2021 after 15 years of 18 total teaching. I felt it was now time to explain why I made that choice. I've always been dedicated to the school district. I'm a 1998 graduate, and I've lived here my entire life. I dreamed of coming back here to teach after earning my degree and subbing the district right out of college. Then I taught at the Hills for one year and Penn Hills for two before I earned my position in this district. The last word anyone would use to describe me as a teacher is lazy. I was a building rep for the Union, foreign language department head, Spanish fund sponsor, a key coordinator of sample West Midland, coordinator of the annual community service day. And last year, I was called upon to teach a social media class, which also entailed running all of the high school's social media accounts. This requires 24/7 surveillance, as this community is very fond of social media and does not always use it responsibly. I always liked being busy. COVID teaching, however, required a lot more time and effort on top of all of that, which many outside of teaching in a classroom failed to recognize. Teaching in person and online required more than double the work, which was not compensated for in any way, but was temporary, right? However, the reason I finally moved on from teaching was the lack of feeling of value. When the leadership changed at the beginning of last school year, the faculty and staff never heard from Mr. Solz. No communication. I was also asked to take on the school-to-work program at high school last year. I was only sent two Word documents for it, and I had a call meeting with that Mr. Solomon to get any direction for the program. I shouldn't have to ask for direction. In the spring, I had an opportunity to move into a human resource role, but I was worried about the financial aspect. This was around the same time the early retirement incentive was implemented. I was not eligible, as I only had 15 years in, not 16. I went to the union, who asked the district on my behalf if they'd like to take advantage of it. No contest, the answer was yes. This showed me something much deeper. I was only numbered for a page. My value has no worth. What I've cost in dollars to this district is the only thing that mattered. People ask if I regret leaving? No. I am valued at my new job. In fact, I had more conversations with my boss's boss's boss in my first three months there than I did with the two of you combined all last year. I work with great people. I am valued. I am appreciated. What I appreciate now is that the leaders my tax money pays for, and if the board that was elected to serve the taxpayers of this school district would value their own human resources, the faculty and staff of this school district, as much as I am now valued in a new role and a new job. I miss my colleagues. I miss the students. But I do not miss the way that I felt in my last year of teaching in this district.
My name is Fred Danchanko. I reside 432 Lisa Drive. It was my privilege and honor to be a music teacher in West Midland for 31 years. I had many mixed emotions about retiring her. It was a very difficult and emotional, as you can see, decision. But in working with music department head Devin Seale, we began to make plans for hiring a new orchestra teacher that would enable the rest of the music department to fully be staffed to rebuild after COVID. I now know that I was deceived. I was never replaced. Other teachers that retired early were not replaced either. Instead, and here's an example, my music colleagues were forced to take on the additional burden of teaching all of my orchestra and string classes. Mr. Kessler, our wonderful band director, was forced to also serve as the orchestra director and take over the chamber strings, like he's not busy enough already. Mr. Smeele, our department head, had to abandon his position at the building, building the band program for the elementary and middle school. It was the foundation of the marching band, is when that takes place at that level. Instead, he had to take on the position of teaching strings. These changes are potentially devastating to the music department. The district music performances have always been a source of great pride for this community. All of this makes me very sad. On top of that, this fall, Mr. Smeele and Mr. Kessler recruited almost 150 new band and orchestra students and felt that they had shown a clear need for at least a half-time teacher to be hired. That proposal was stopped by Mr. Solz before it could even be discussed. Other vital teachers across the district were not replaced. Now, this discussion about teacher furlough letters. I don't want to say a word about what the music teachers went through during COVID. It was very, very challenging. And the step through all the buildings, had to make changes all the time, on the fly, learning new skills, adapting. It was extremely stressful and difficult. And I'll tell you what, the teachers feel overworked and overstressed and also not appreciated for all of these efforts that they have done. This is really, really... Our jobs are our passion, that's our profession. But but we did not expect, we expect at least to be supported and feel that we are supported by administration. Board members, please vote no to the furlough resolution. Unnecessary changes is another thing. Unnecessary changes to special education programming have left our students without the supports they need, which I believe is against the law. Honestly, I think Mr. Souls cares more about numbers. Mr. Danchenko, your time is up, please. In closing, in closing, in closing, in closing, Mr. Souls is not providing essential holistic leadership. Sadly, I believe too much of his focus has been on numbers, not on educating our children. Thank you.
Hello. Johanna Devon, twenty-five thirteen Jefferson Avenue. I'm still confused about the bullying and fighting it has gotten worse and... When you add alcohol, vaping, and drugs into the mix, there is no display for anyone's actions. There is a lot of disrespect towards teachers and principals. I am proud of Westniflin but ashamed of the school. I can't vote to because of all of the issues. Even though I came up here in the past, I am still getting elected. Tonight I stand with our teachers and Dr. Costadna. Would you proudly send your kids to the school of Westniflin? Very well. Thank you.
Teresa Secley.
Teresa Secley, one ten Main Avenue Drive. I also just want to say the lack of communication in this district is absolutely horrible. We get weekly updates, but not updates about education. Um, call mine the recent Keystone testing where we got letters when the kids were on break that parents were not notified our children were taking a test until there was nobody to call for answers. I also question the dedication of Mr. Souls. I had an issue with busing where my daughter was dropped off on eight eighty-five. I drove up to the administration going to get three o'clock. There was no administrators up there. Our district doesn't dismiss until what, three thirty-five, three fifty in the evening? I've never ever seen that as long as I've, my daughter's in eleventh grade. I've gone up to the administration with an issue with not a problem. I think that no administrator should leave until all of these children are dismissed from the buildings. I mean, these are our teachers, you need to be there. And I mean, these teachers go eleven beyond. I can't tell you how many times I've gotten a call when, you know, my daughter may have missed school and needed help with an assignment. It's eight o'clock at night. These people have families and they can't call you during the day because we don't have substitutes. They don't get family. The amount of time that these teachers dedicate to our students is more than we compensate them for, and I think we need to save them our administration.
Jean Crossick.
Jean Crossick, sixteen ten Green Springs Avenue. A little bit different subject, um, my complaint or whatever is has to do with the handicap parking. There's eight spaces up at the high school. I've attended quite a few basketball games this year and I, every time I come there, there's at least three or four cars in a handicap parking lot that don't have stickers. One of them is your little mail truck that you use to run around to the different schools with a different bell. It's in there every day I go by, it's up there right now and you go out and see it. The handicap parking is for handicapped people. I'm handicapped, fully understand, not very well, but I'm handicapped. I've had to park in the loading dock one time and one other time I wasn't able to squeeze in, I had to go down and park in the lower lot and climb up the steps. Now, my handicap isn't that bad, but I do have a handicap placard. I have the registered card from the state to have a handicap plaque. I feel that I should be able to park in the handicap parking spot. I asked the school guards, the whatever the, not the police force, the school guards. I mentioned it to them, they blew me off. One time I talked to Officer Eagle, Sergeant, well, I'm not sure what his rank is. I said about the one car out there. He said, I think that belongs to administrator. I said, it don't have a handicap placard on it. Oh, what do you want me to do? I said, get a tow truck and tow it out of there. He said, I'll get fired. Why would you get fired for doing your job? The handicap parking for the handicapped people. One time I was told, oh, that's the guy that, uh, runs the concession stand. There's cars parked along the yellow curb all night long. Why can't he park out there if he don't have a handicap sticker? When I come in tonight at this school here, there's a big ton of truck out there in the handicap spot. I checked the license plate, I checked the mirror, no car, no plate. He's in the middle of the handicap parking. I don't know who it belonged to, doesn't really matter because nobody in force of the handicapped rules around here. Thank you.
Diane Stemesic.
Uh, Diane Stemesic, twenty-eight oh three Galway Line Extension. Uh, on page six of the agenda, there's the invoices. I do understand the invoice for the middle school structural damage. I don't understand the fact that we didn't use the insurance company for that. But I watched the work session online and for the additional professional services for ten thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, I could not hear the explanation um, on the video that was live streaming of the meeting. So I would like to know what that is for. Uh, second of all, I'd like to congratulate, uh, the, I believe there's six volunteer coaches, which I think is outstanding. Uh, the other issue, one of the other issues is I stand behind these teachers. I'm a retired registered nurse of thirty-eight years, union secretary for local SEIU five eighty-five that represented the nurses at McKeeford Hospital. The hardest day of my life was when I had to walk out on strike because of the lack of pay that we would get and appreciation. So I'm wearing my blue and gold, extremely proud as a nineteen seventy-one graduate of Westniflin North. Looking, I'm thinking of with not enough staff. I'm very active in the arts, music to be exact, very active with the Tamaritsons. Learned how to adapt, learned playing instruments from the time I was in school here. And these kids aren't getting the same benefits that I received fifty-one years ago. It's sad. We've got to do something. We've got to help and and do for these teachers. They give up a lot for these students. I note for one, I have an autistic nephew and what they do for him at Clare-Horton is amazing. Now, the only other thing I have to say is, as everybody knows in this district, I have always supported Dr. Costadna. Always, will always. The one thing I'm questioning right now is, we have outside counsel that is handling the federal lawsuit. I've been sitting down there in the courtroom, other than today, listening to testimony. So are we now going to pay our solicitors for sitting in the courtroom on a case that technically we're paying somebody else to do? I object to that and I will always question bills that I feel are unnecessary. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, let's stand and comment.
Can I make a motion to, uh, retire from director of sessions, please?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Anto.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Buhas.
Yes.
Stoudt.
Yes.
Blazek.
Yes.
Make the right decision.
Hi.
Hi.
Real quick, did you happen to know, to know this word, speakers brand after a hard game, that's... Danchenko, so my son is with me, was with me to work, I graduated. He came in not in my land, I would play by, he's on, graduated, he's everything. Kessler, my kids, again, have played, he bought it on Amazon, bought himself one, like YouTube, and they moved. Kessler and my daughter still, yeah, we're going to Disney next week and she is actually a part of the school district and that's where I saw my Kessler, she's in the musical and everything. So not only is Smeele in charge of the music with Kessler, they're not only doing music, they're in the band, orchestra, less than a big musical together with maybe just a more... As, my daughter just texted me, they're overwhelmed because she's had community issues due to math class and she said they're sorry, they're overwhelmed, they're over late, and that's why... For for kids to not do, for these little programs to get lost in the system, they're much... They're much of that.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Oh, good.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Donahue. Second by Mrs. Ahern. Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Costadino.
Yes.
Blazek.
Yes. Five information items. Mr. President, there is no information item received. Six, order directors.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would respectfully request a motion second and approval on the following items. Under six, items A through E were discussed in the work session last week. We did briefly touch that we may, item left that we may move to meetings. So we are moving the meetings from this point forward back to the Borough Building, where the district offices are held in council chambers. So we will advertise that. So that's a motion to make that happen. And item G, we updated the workers' compensation insurance panels for physicians, which requires board approval. And then we will send those out to the schools. We added UPE, or what we had, Sergeant Karen Braddock, the better serve the employees on this side of the district.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, good.
Motion by Mr. Donahue.
Second.
Second by Mr. D'Scenzo. Questions or comments?
I have a question. I believe it's in the teacher contract that we must send furlough letters by March 60 days notice that in case there would be a furlough, you have to be notified ahead of time. And I believe that it's also part of our state law. Can somebody correct me if that's incorrect?
Yes, if you want the option of furloughing, there is this requirement. And I believe that's why it's signed on agenda first. We need the requirements for notice. If you want the option of furloughing, you have to pass that stuff.
So that would be if we want the option.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
So if you don't want the option, we vote against it?
Yes, okay. And I believe last time we did one on Friday. This one, I believe, really based on the decrease of population or losing. I mean, do you have an agreement whether you can, City School District, on regard to furloughing, whether or not the furlough teachers have an option? I'll be ready to debate.
We do have less students, less enrollment, but we still have up to 20-plus kids on the elementary classrooms. And we do have needs in the special age.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes, everything but E, note E.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, to all but E.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes, to all but E.
Yuhas. Yuhas.
No.
No, the last.
Oh, oh.
Yes, everybody.
Costadino.
Yes, to everything but no to E.
Blazek.
Yes.
Mr. President, everything passed on a nine because he wrote a vote with the exception of six E, which failed on a five for four vote.
Seven, finance.
We have three items that were not, that were added since the work session last week. One, item number one is a transfer of $22,280 from the GE SA Construction Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. This coincides with the bill that's going to be listed under Capital Projects. We don't have check writing ability from that construction fund. It is appropriate for it to be paid out of that construction fund. So we move it to the Capital Projects and then pay it out of the Capital Projects. Item number two is authorizing the solicitor's office to settle the real estate tax appeal, Mayor of Hospitality Hall, the express limit in Church Road, in the amounts that were discussed in executive session. And item number three is authorization for myself to close two student activity account certificates of deposits out of PNC Bank. Deposit set assets in the student activity account out of First National Bank. As you know, we switched from PNC Bank to First National Bank, and I was able to move millions upon millions of dollars with no issue. But they went forward, actually, and closed two CDs, which totaled about $35,000. So we'll do that and move on with that.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern. Second by Mr. Donahue. Questions or comments?
Chris, do you have clarification on number two? Because this exact appeal was addressed by us in August of this year. The past year.
Yep. Yeah, I issued that. Remember, we talked about last.
I think she didn't hear me say that.
We approved it in August. The same exact appeal. So I didn't know if something different had changed or what the difference was.
I don't think this was, I think we approved going to the next step on this. And then it went for the next step in the course. So this is settled and that was. I think we asked for a certain range to try to settle things previously. It was not settled there, so now it's a different level.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Costadino.
Yes.
Blazek.
Yes. Eight, purchasing in contract.
I have one item under purchasing in contract, and Mr. Stevenson did talk about purchasing new uniforms for girls' basketball, boys' basketball, women's soccer, varsity, junior varsity football.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. D'Scenzo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Questions or comments?
I have a comment in regards to purchasing. I'd still like to consider the option of purchasing new uniforms for the middle school students, considering the amount we spend on high schools. And I'd also like the athletic director to keep an inventory of the condition of the uniforms for middle school. So we don't have any disparities as the season approaches.
Mrs. Engler, are we asking for a specific sport in the middle school?
No.
No.
Not at all.
Okay, we can't hear you down here.
Um, fine.
I think last week that there was discussion about hand downs.
Okay.
And I think also, talking to Mrs. Engler earlier, that I get a decent amount of turnover at the middle school with coaches and leaving it on them to figure out what uniforms they don't do or don't have. Then maybe the athletic director can help manage that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Costadino.
Yes.
Blazek.
Yes. Nine, financial reports.
Under nine financial reports, everything was discussed last week in the work session. There's no addition since then.
Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Costadino.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Costadino.
Yes.
Blazek.
Yes. Ten invoices filled payable purchase orders.
Under A1, general fund invoices, A through E was discussed last week. We did actually receive our bill for a month of retainer that day, so it was not on the agenda last week. And we did receive a bill from Jonathan Hess for $4,160 for his payment for the second and third installments for the tax collection. And 2A was the invoice that we transferred the money earlier in the agenda. And B is the home building wall passes final inspection. And this would be the final payment to close that job. And those are both being paid out of the Capital Projects Fund. Three, we have the bills, P card, cash disbursements, four purchase orders that we all discussed last week.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Donahue.
Second.
Second by Mr. D'Scenzo. Questions or comments?
Just that Mr. Matt got the $10,000. That's the stagnant litigation. And yeah, that's still going on. We work closely with the insurance council. The middle school property was under insurance. It was denied at the claim because it was considered defected by the builder at the last litigation. We're going after the builder.
You said we're going after the builder?
We're not, well, we're going after the builder, the architect, the engineer, the project manager. We sue them all. But our general liability insurance was covered because it was being pressured off by them.
Okay, nice.
I also asked questions in regards to our solicitor bills. I felt the letter of engagement in regards to our contract is very vague. The response was vague. I felt my questions were answered in a vague manner. And we repeatedly asked for monthly billing instead of these large bills. And that happened, and I come to it and make it.
That was last week. And we should give monthly bills now instead of order. I'm starting to feel that we haven't had to answer anything. If you may have questions. I have never seen our engagement letter. Unfortunately, that was not current disclosure at the time. But I believe it was just the same as the previous listener's. But I'm happy to take a look at that with you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, to all but 1A, B, and C.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Costadino.
Yes.
Blazek.
Yes.
Blaischek.
Yes. Thirteen district operations.
Under thirteen district operations, Mr. President, we have nothing on that agenda to complain.
Twelve superintendent quarters.
Number twelve superintendent quarters, Mr. President, we have one student activities as presented and listed. Under two, we have student fundraising activities as listed. Under three, Villages and Browns, we have facility use as listed. And number five, we have the home school visitors report that we added prior to tonight's meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Engler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Castellano.
Yes.
Blaischek.
Yes. Thirteen professional personnel.
Number fourteen, Mr. President, we have letter A, we have one item, A, one, A through E as presented.
Motion.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. D'Angelo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Squires. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Castellano.
Yes.
Blaischek.
Yes. Fourteen non-certified personnel.
Number fourteen, Mr. President, we have item one, leaves of assets, we have A as presented. Under number two, retirements, we have A and B as presented. Under three, hires and transfer, we have A through C as presented, and we have one substitute under number four, on strike for custom.
Motion. Motion. Motion by Mrs. Ahern. Sorry. Second by Mrs. Castellano. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Castellano.
Yes.
Blaischek.
Yes. Fifteen athletic personnel.
Number fifteen athletic personnel, Mr. President, we have one, under one, designation A through E. Under number two, hires, we have A through C. And under three, others, we have A through B as presented.
Motion.
Is this a full event?
Medical two events.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. D'Angelo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
D'Angelo.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Castellano.
Yes.
Blaischek.
Yes.
Second, please, by report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sixteen board president's correspondence. I just want to take a moment to recognize the comments made earlier today by our teachers, my statement and, you know, discussion with the board earlier today. Wanted to read a statement that we have for you all. The board wants to recognize the concerns brought forward by the Westmifflin Federation of Teachers Union Leadership. It is our desire to work collaboratively with the union, district leadership, and families that understand and explore specific concerns and address key matters where appropriate. We feel there is a great opportunity to further deepen relationships across the district, develop mutually agreeable approaches, and put our students first in all that we do. To help facilitate this, the board will form a special committee to meet with key district and community stakeholders over the next several months to elicit feedback and insights into challenges as well as positive programs. Upon completion, the special committee will report out a prioritized list of opportunities to the relevant responsible parties for consideration, implementation, and ongoing monitoring. The Westmifflin School Board is focused on representing the best interests of our students while ensuring that district operations operates as efficiently and effectively as possible. We look forward to continually improving our efforts in cooperation with our teachers, administration, parents, and our students as we move forward. Thank you.
Seventeen executive session discussion. We had personnel litigation.
Yes, we have personnel litigation, like prior, definitely session prior to this meeting, and the executive session called for on the court, which also dealt with a litigation matter, and we had an executive session that last, after last week's agenda.
Thank you. Eighteen board reports, committee reports. Committee reports were given last week. Are there any updates?
No, sorry.
Steel sign report, Mrs. Castellano.
We'd like to thank Mr. Ryan for Mr. Squires for coming and presenting.
I appreciate the fact that we received it ahead of time, there's a lot there to digest, so do appreciate that. Nineteen solicitors report.
My report was given last week, and twelve of us.
Thank you, Chris. Twenty full business. Twenty-one new business.
I can find out if any points were updated to help the safety plan, because that was on the horizon, considering the deadline may change, if any need for more.
Uplet updates to help with safety.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Castellano. Second by Mr. Donahue. He needs to adjourn.